...meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your phones. Prior to proceeding, I would like to take a moment to recognize a valued member of our fire rescue team who tragically lost over the weekend. Our thoughts and prayers are with them, their family, and the fellow team members during Please rise for the invocation and pledge.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam clerk, please call the roll.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Present.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
He's restarting his computer. He will be on virtually.
Thank you. District five, Chairman Mariano.
Here. Now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on any other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we'll take public comment for all those who are here in person. Then we'll take public comment for those who are preregistered for a WebEx link and currently on cue. We request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair. I'll call the first three names. First, first public comment is Richard Riley, followed by Michael Gorgetti, then Robert Butters. Mr. Riley, thank you.
I have a graphic. Good morning. My name is Richard Riley. I live at two zero two, three five Old Trilby Road, Dade City. I, now you can hear me, thank you. I live in the rural community of Trilby in northeast rural Pasco Protected Area. Essentially, in the red triangle in the middle of the upper corner of our county. This is a plan out of the Lakouchi Plan. This is a map out of Lakouchi Plan. This is why I intend to speak on it. Later today, in item R forty-five, you will have a presentation of the Greater Lakouchi Community Plan. This thirty-three-page report was presented by staff to the planning commission last month at eight P. M. at the end of a meeting to a packed audience of three people. Today, this will be also presented at the end of the regular session of this commission. I am very impressed with the report and the ideas presented in it. It reports on the history of our area and provides suggestions on how to improve the economic structure and quality of life for our area. I thank the commission for authorizing this report. It suggests building up the population, the industrial base, and public and private services, and includes a vision map on page thirty-three. Graphic number two, please. Second map. Oh, you're so, so good. You have in your agenda these materials, and I'm sure you're aware of it. I would like to make a suggestion for a change in the report. This is the map. It includes a lot of possibilities for growth and improvement by Pasco and local businesses. It also suggests possible developments. Priority strategy C twenty-nine is to ensure the rural content of the study area. One of these suggestions is not in the existing Trilby-Lakouchi area at all, but in the beautiful rural agricultural land to the west that we refer to as the Trilby Hills, a lower part of the Brooksville Ridge, the green part on the left of the map up there. The map recommends in section C twenty-four, the total area along Kittering Road to be developed as a large-scale, high-density housing development. It's presently owned by Evans Properties Incorporated. The suggestion is, the suggestion in the report is to cluster future development along the Hernando County line. I remind you that this is in the protected, the rural protected area that was established to balance the overdevelopment of passing the hills in two thousand and five and was approved by the commission in two thousand and fifteen. This should not be allowed. May I offer a suggestion to this report? Tear off the left side of this map. This is the report that should be here. The big map is bad as development, four thousand homes. Thank you very much.
Next question.
Michael Gorgetti.
Hi, my name is Mike Giorgetti. I live at ninety-two thirty-three Haney Court, Trinity, Florida. I just had some questions or I need to get some clarification on my taxes. I understand a homesteaded property is protected in Florida. It's only supposed to go up so much. However, mine went up almost nine percent, which has tripled the homesteaded protected value. Thank you, Mr. Starkey. I appreciate your help this morning, and I know you told me to speak with someone. If I could just talk to them afterwards, I'd appreciate it, but I appreciate you taking your time to help me out. The second thing that I was kind of wondering about or just wanted to pass by you guys is Duke Electric, between Duke Electric and FGU A Water, I'm at about a thousand dollars a month in Trinity, Florida. I just, I don't quite understand how with this economy and how terrible it is, how they could keep raising their rates and it falls upon the poor people of the communities. We have many elderly people in our community, and how they could afford this is just beyond me. I just wanted to hopefully ask your mercy if you guys could do something or if there's any plans in the future to give the property owners of this county some relief because it's getting, it's getting pretty tough to live here. So, that's all I wanted to say. And thank you again, Mrs. Starkey. Appreciate you.
Is there someone here from budget that can?
Budget.
I thought I saw him, but I thought I didn't see him.
All right. Next up, we have Robert Butters, followed by Renee Worthenmeyer. Sorry if I, say that again?
Worthheimer.
Worth?
Worthheimer.
It is? I can't say it, I'm sorry. And then Diane Krug. So, Mr. Butlers, Butters?
Good morning. My name is Robert Butters. I live at three two four four zero Silver Creek Way in Wesley Chapel. That's in the Watergrass neighborhood. I've lived there for about ten years. I'm a retired professional engineer. I have thirty-five years' experience in highway and bridge design, construction, and maintenance. My concern is the permit application process and its effects on traffic volumes and damage to our roadways. I believe the permit application for any development must include two things. First, a traffic study by a professional engineer to indicate the traffic generated by the new development and its effects on the existing levels of service. If traffic signals are warranted, they must be funded and constructed by the developer prior to occupation of any units. The intersection of Overpass and Angel Stem is going to become a large problem very soon. The access road to the large development at the northeast corner of Curly Road and Overpass Road is directly opposite Angel Stem. Without a signal, making a left turn from Angel Stem to Overpass will be extremely dangerous. Any crossing movements will be nearly impossible. The second requirement for getting a permit is that the bond, a bond, should be obtained by the developer to fund repairs to roadways caused by construction activities of the developer. The repeated loads of heavy trucks on streets that were not designed for them causes the base failures that we see on Old Bridge Road. The reason you don't see the damage on Overpass Road is because, as an arterial, it was designed to higher standards. Videotaping the roadway before and after the development is an easy and cost-effective way to document the damage. What concerns me most is that taxpayers are being held responsible for paying to repair this damage, not the parties that caused it. I'm asking the commissioners to review their permit application process, to require a traffic study, and funding for warranted traffic signals and a bond to cover roadway repairs. It's time to place these responsibilities on the developer and relieve the taxpayers of this undue financial burden. Thank you for your opportunity to speak to you today.
No clapping.
Renee Worthenmeyer.
I'm Renee Worthheimer. My address is two zero one 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 Old Trilby Road in Dade City. I'm a native Floridian. I was born and raised in Miami. I also lived in Palm Beach Gardens for twenty-plus years. I've made Dade City my home for the last twelve years. I'm a daughter of the American Revolution, an accountant and tax preparer with my own business for close to thirty-five years. However, my true love is being a farm owner. Believe it or not, Miami used to be rural, just like Dade City, growing up. That is what attracted me to this area, the rural and beautiful rolling hills. Palm Beach Gardens was also like Dade City when I first moved there. However, what pushed me out of both towns was the growth and destruction of the rural areas. This meeting is not about me. What I came here to say to our commissioners is this: Once you start allowing the building of homes and businesses, you can never get back the beauty and wide-open spaces that we have. To be specific, the Evans property, the drive on five seventy-five between Trilby and Blanton really should be designated a scenic drive. The thought of it being developed with thousands of homes makes me sick to my stomach. We will lose our farming capabilities. Are we going to eat the businesses and homes once there is no more land left to raise cattle? I'm asking the commissioners that were voted on by the people to be for the people as you swore in your oath when you took office. I know there is a lot of money to be made, however, please do not put profits before people and don't allow the money to control your vote. Keep our area rural. In closing, I just want to say thank you all for all you do. I know you have a very difficult job, and just remember, some people will remember you for the good you did, however, most people will never forget the bad you do. Thank you.
Diane Krug, followed by Lisa, I think it's Movetti, and then Joey Resnick.
Good morning, neighbors and friends and commissioners. My name is Diane. I live in Trilby, and I came here today not to hear what land grabbers' proposals are for our communities, but to oppose it. I've worked in downtown Tampa for thirty-nine years and witnessed the constant addition of buildings being constructed, high-rise apartments amidst high-rise businesses, which meant constant noise, traffic, fast pace, et cetera, anything but calming. After working ten hours a day, I would drive one hour to enter into a different world I call home, peaceful, quiet, able to sit outside till dark and unwind, interact with my family and my animals. I'm sure most of you can relate to this lifestyle. We need to preserve our agricultural land, which I thought was protected under the protections of the Northeast Rural Area Overlay in the Comprehensive Plan for Pasco County. The very land that produces our wholesome food, supports our local farmers, future farmers of America, and protect our freedom and liberties. Wholesome food does not come from a big-box store. An agricultural commissioner's obligations as a constitutional officer is to conserve soil and water resources, manage state forests, ensuring the safety and wholesomeness of our food, not to mention wildlife. That's why we collectively need to hold our electric officials accountable to their oath to serve we, the people, not special interest groups. That is the only way our votes will count. In closing, I have one question for this audience. Where is our duly-elected agricultural commissioner who is a farmer and lives in our community? I, for one, would like to know where he stands on this issue. Thank you for listening.
Name and address.
Miss Diane?
Miss Diane?
Could you state your name and address? Or you said your name, you said your first name, but could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, my first and last, Diane Krug.
And your address?
And my address is Trilby. I live in Trilby.
Address. We can't match that.
All right, we have, the next up is Lisa Movetti and Joey Resnick, followed by Steve
Good morning. My name is Lisa Moretti. I live at one six three three one, Iola Woods Trail. I'm a founding member of the Pasco Communities Network, and I'm here to speak about the Greater Lakouchi Community Plan you will be reviewing this afternoon as agenda item R eighty-five. While this plan used significant time and energy from the residents of the Lakouchi, Trilby, and Hunters Point areas, their overwhelming response was that they wanted to stay part of the Northeast Rural Area Plan and the protections that affords their communities. I stand here in support of those residents and their desires for their communities, which are being ignored. You have the time and energy, but have, you have used their time and energy, but given them no assurances that you will even abide by the plan or their wishes. Instead, we have people walking about, bragging about how they're going to build high-density, million-dollar homes in the area. Further, the areas proposed for that high-density development, which are not congruent with the Northeast Rural Overlay, have begun to ooze and sprawl across the Evans Group properties. The land was purchased many years ago as agricultural land. The Evans Group has no right to expect that they can abuse the Northeast Rural Overlay and develop the area at high density, nor should they have an expectation of flipping it to others once they have their way. While I repeatedly hear, "You cannot tell people how to do things with their land," that simply is not true. You can't build a strip club next to a kindergarten. It's called zoning. While one commissioner has envisioned himself as a savior of the Lakouchi area by staving off solar installations, and while I do not find that the Wilton Simpson-Tico Rural Degradation Solar Fields project acceptable or congruent, I would rather have solar on that land than miles of high-density crappy housing. At least a solar field done correctly with proper conditions from the planning department that would allow for agriculture and give wildlife a corridor to move through the area would be better than what you've got planned. Once it's paved and blighted, there's no coming back from this plan to destroy Lakouchi and its surrounding areas and the Northeast Rural Overlay. We don't have the water for this, and you're putting us on a bullet train for toilet-to-tap. From our experience, our commissioners are dedicated to getting everything that protects the rural overlay, a model held up nationally as a way to bring widely different stakeholders to the table and create a plan that works for everyone, except for those driven by greed at all costs. To the residents of Pasco County, I remind you, this is an election year, when you go to the voting booth this year, you have a choice. If you want better, then vote better. Incumbents and large landowners see Pasco as their ATM machine and do not have your concerns at heart. Thank you.
Next.
No, no clapping.
Next, next for public comment is Josie, Joe, sorry, Joey Resnick.
You got it. Thank you. I could change my name. Thanks very much. Thanks very much. Joey Resnick, address is 2503 Sunny Shores Drive, Tampa, Florida 33618. And I am here representing Premier Community Healthcare Group. I am the CEO. We've provided, we've been providing healthcare services in Pasco County for 44 years, and I'm here to really say thank you for, and I'm going to make sure I get it right, an R87, the approval of the Opioid Treatment Prevention Recovery Fund awardees. I will say the process that you guys set up with the committee was impressive. I was there for the day presentation. We are lucky enough to be a recipient of that, so I wanted to come here and publicly thank you for setting up that committee and awarding us those funds. Those funds will be used for, and I'll make sure again, behavioral therapy, medication management, as well as support recovery. And from our model is that we are a patient-centered medical home, so we want to take these patients that are coming in with the opioid and manage their entire health, ranging from dental services to medical services, to if it happens to be, we have women's services as well. So just want to come here and publicly thank you. Also, the last thing is that I know there's some conversations coming up about the Bay Care, Urgent Care, and Mental Health perspective. Just letting you know that we have started very, very preliminary conversations with them about potentially for us to partner in that center, so then we can provide more services to the residents of Pasco County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And your building's looking so nice.
Thank you very much.
I gotta come get a tour.
Whenever you want. We have the other one, and we have two, so I know which one you want to see. I'll take you to vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joey.
Steve Blank, followed by Carol Cruz, followed by Mike Trepper.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name's Steve Blank. I am the Vice President for West Care. My address is 10226 Daybreak Glen and Parish. But West Care operates two locations. One is 6448 Ridge Road in Port Ritchie, and one is 15,000 Citrus Country Drive here in Dade City. I am here also just to say, we appreciate the efforts that have gone into developing the Pasco Opioid Task Force. We are being considered for an opportunity to provide a resource here in Pasco. We just wanted to say that our vision is uplifting the human spirit as a result of the opioid epidemic. Millions of people have lost sense of their human spirit, and millions of people have also lost their lives. We've been doing this for a long time. We understand there's no easy way out of this. We've provided a proposal that includes overdose awareness, prevention, distribution of Narcan, case management, utilization of peer support, and using people that are in long-term recovery, and also giving kids here from Pasco County continued access to Camp Mariposa, which is a camp that we run six times a year for children who have been impacted by addiction in their households. So I wanted to just mention that we do operate this camp. We've been operating it since 2016. The camp is operated actually in Manatee and Parish, so it's not here in Pasco, but we've been bringing kids from Pasco since we've been in Pasco. It just so turns out that the facility that we use, the Episcopal Retreat Center, is located in Manatee. It's a beautiful facility. I've had the opportunity to mentor there with the kids and to see just what these kids have been through and how much they appreciate being able to be kids. The end result of what happens with the kids that go through these camps is they are 90% not likely to move towards addiction and use. That has tons of impact in regards to their kids and their kids' kids. So we just appreciate being considered a resource for Pasco County. We want to continue to be a resource and just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carol Cruz, followed by Mike Trepper, followed by Jay Vogel.
Carol Cruz, 17500 Spring Valley Road in Dade City, Florida. And I've been in Pasco County for 53 years. And 15 of those years, actually 20 of those years, I worked with a group of people, I was one of the originals, to put a protection on a rural area where people can go live in peace and have that beautiful feeling of peace in a rural area. If any of you have ever lived in a rural area, you know what I mean. But for the word northeast protected area, protection means protection. And protection means not allowing high density go into that area. To have high density put into that is almost unconstitutional, because it is rural and it is protected. Trilby Road is one of the most scenic, beautiful roads in our protected area. So I'm asking you, as we, the people, who put each and every one of you in this office, please stand by the word protection. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mike Trepper, President and CEO of Pasco Kids First. My address is 15026 Meadow Lake Street, Odessa 33556. I am here also to speak in favor and support and a thank you of the opioid abatement plan and project and the innovative way that you are dispersing, hoping to disperse funds in this community. It's been a long time coming, and I know we all realize the impact of this. Pasco Kids First, as you may know, is our child advocacy center here in this county. We deal with over 5,000 cases of child abuse neglect each year that come through our office for medical assessment, forensic interviews, and therapy and healing services. And our small piece to this abatement project is really to make the connection between opioid and substance abuse and the impact on child, and the connection and the impact on child abuse, you know, when individuals are under the influence and not supervising their children, or unfortunately, we've seen cases where the parents have passed away and children are left to their own selves, or the impact on trauma that kids have seen parents overdosing and using and selling in front of them. It's a major impact. And so that's our small piece to this project. We're really fortunate to be considered for funding in this plan, and we'll look to do our best in relation to also the partners that have come through this plan as well. So thank you very much. I am only a couple months new into this position, and I hope to meet with all of you and talk about, and thank you really in person about the great work that you're doing in support of Pasco Kids First and the Child Advocacy Center here. But again, my support, unwavering support for this opioid abatement plan and project, and thank you again for bringing this to our organizations, but also to the residents of Pasco County.
Thank you.
Jay Vogel, followed by Karen Barfield.
Good morning. My name is Jay Vogel. I live at 12221 Main Street in San Antonio. I'm the mayor of San Antonio, and I'm here today to speak about the Orange Belt Trail. At a time when we have an unprecedented assault on home rule from Tallahassee, my hope is that the county and the elected city governments of Pasco can work hand-in-hand on this project. This is one issue in which my constituents have spoken with a unified voice. We are not opposed to the bike trail. We just feel strongly that it should not go through any of our residential neighborhoods. Our streets simply can't handle it, and we do not want to go through eminent domain with the county. Later today, I believe you'll hear a letter that more directly states our position, that our city commission sent to all of you. I have directed my staff to work closely with the county on this matter, and if the commissioners or county staff have any questions or concerns, please reach out to any one of us. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to address the Nellis County Board of County Commissioners. And my name is Karen Barfield. I'm a Pasco County resident. My personal address is 32042 Brookstone Drive in Wesley Chapel. But I'm here today on behalf of Central Florida Behavioral Health Network, which is your managing entity. Our offices are actually located at 719 South US Highway 301 in Tampa. And CFBHN is Florida's largest and oldest managing entity specifically created by the Florida Legislature to develop and manage the publicly-funded substance abuse and mental health safety net system of care. We are here in support of the opioid task force and use of funding for services for constituents of Pasco County to support continued community efforts for the public health epidemic. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all that I have signed up. I am aware that at least one person did not have the opportunity to sign up and would like to speak.
Okay. Anyone else here would like to speak? Please, please line up behind the mic.
Hi, I'm Heidi Taylor, 34501 Tranca View Lane, Dade City. I would like to ask you to all consider all future development to please follow the Pasco County Northeast Rural Area Overlay. Please make yourselves aware of that document and follow it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Justin McPadden, 192 Plantar Road, Spring Hill, Florida. I am the president of the Hope Shot, and we're here with the opioid task force and the abatement funds. I just want to say that we represent the recovery community, and we are extremely grateful to the county commissioners for approving or thinking about approving the funds for the Recovery Resource Center and Silver Lining Scholarships that we have a proposal in for. Your decision clearly shows that you recognize the significance of investing in the well-being of our community. These funds play a crucial role in creating a stable environment for individuals, enabling to them to sustain their recovery and achieve long-term success. The center will serve as a safe haven for those battling addiction, providing them with the necessary support, resources for their journey towards recovery. Your dedication to our community is truly commendable, and we feel privileged to have you as county commissioners. Thank you for your unwavering support. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, I do have a letter of intent to attach to the appropriations.
Move to a second file.
Second. All in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Okay. You can give it to the clerk. All right. So anyone else here for public comment? This time was closed public comment in the audience. Anyone on WebEx?
There's no one on WebEx.
This concludes our public comment. Now's the time for resolutions. Madam Clerk?
If you're here for National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, thank you. Please step to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Linda Ward. I'm the President and CEO of Gulfside Healthcare Services, and we have been serving Pasco County exclusively with hospice and palliative care for 35 years. Today, we serve over 1,000 patients daily in Pasco County, and I just want to thank the county commissioners for all your support. We're very excited that we have our care center in Zephyr Hills, and we are purchasing land to build our second care center in Newport Ritchie, which the county has, the commissioners have approved and issued a bond for that tax-exempt funding. So thank you so much. I've got invitations for our groundbreaking ceremony. I hope you can join us on December 8th, and I want to thank you for all your support for hospice care in Pasco County.
Well, thank you, Linda. And we're going to read the resolution, then we'll do a picture, and we'll take a few more comments. Thanks.
Resolution number 24-024, Resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the month of November as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month and commending Gulfside Healthcare Services for its outstanding service and dedication to the citizens of Pasco County. Whereas hospice and palliative care provide the highest quality of care to patients and families and bring comfort, love, and respect for all those they serve in communities across the nation and here in Pasco County. And whereas hospice and palliative care providers take the time to ask what's important to those they are caring for and listen to what their patients and families say. And whereas hospice and palliative care professionals, including physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, and clergy, provide comprehensive and compassionate care that makes the wishes of each patient and family a priority. And whereas through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training, and assistance, and emotional and spiritual support, patients can live fully until their final moments, surrounded and supported by the faces they loved, of the loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. And whereas providing quality hospice and palliative care reaffirms our belief in the essential dignity of every person, regardless of age, health, or social status, and that every stage of human life deserves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. And whereas every year, more than 1.72 million Americans living with life-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States with 3,683 patients cared for by hospice, Gulfside Hospice in Pasco County. And whereas more than 468,000 trained volunteers contributed 22 million hours of service to hospice programs annually, with 7,287 and 50.57 hours of service being provided locally by Gulfside volunteers so far this year. And whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the month of November as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in Pasco County and commends Gulfside Healthcare Services for its outstanding service and dedication to the citizens of Pasco County. Done and resolved in a regular session with a quorum present and voting this 14th day of November 2023.
Move approve.
Second.
And so I see Commissioner Bradford's on the line, so let's do a roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford. District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. All right. Okay. Well, Commissioner Oakley?
Yes. I'm glad to present this resolution to you today. I hate to say it, but I hear more of Gulfside Hospice named more and more for all the care you give to our citizens. Those that are going, those families are going through issues with their family members and all the, I've done a wonderful job here in Pasco, and I certainly appreciate everything that you do for our citizens here in Pasco, and continue the good works.
Thank you. It's truly an honor to serve the residents here of Pasco County.
Mrs. Starkey?
Well, as you know, my mother-in-law, Marcia Starkey, passed away a couple weeks ago, and she was under the care of Gulfside, and wonderful care, and thank you for everything.
You're welcome.
Mr. Waitman?
Make me nervous to talk about this. No, in all seriousness, we're all, we haven't had a loved one. We'll be there one day in this, we're all impacted by this special work that you do and to your team and the folks that do this line of work for their living. We appreciate their passion, their care, and their dedication, not just to the patient, but to the families that are going through the transition process with them. So thank you. Thank you for all you do for us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Starkey?
Can you speak briefly about your new facility that you're working on?
Sure. It is in Newport Ritchie, between Trouble Creek Road and Rancho Del Rio, one block west of Little Road. There's a beautiful plot of land there that we are going to build a 24-bed inpatient hospice care center serving West Pasco County. It'll, the function will serve identical to our Zephyr Hills Care Center, and it's really dedicated to people who have life-limiting illness that may be transitioning into the end stage of life, or people on hospice care that are at home, the family needs a little bit of a respite so they can come and stay temporarily, or for patients that are having difficulty with pain and symptoms that we could stabilize them and have them go back to their homes-to-be. So we're very excited about it. We hope to break ground very soon.
So my mother passed away a year and a half ago, and we elected, you know, we wanted to bring her home to pass away from the hospital, and she was also under Gulfside care. But if we wanted to go to a facility, we could not have, because all the facilities had waiting lists. So there is definitely a need for your new building and.
Yeah, we have a six-bed unit at the Heather Hill Skilled Nursing Facility, but it's not big enough. And so many of our patients die in the hospital in a scatter bed as opposed to hospice care center or in their homes. So we're just very proud of the connections and the partnerships we have with the whole healthcare spectrum here in Pasco County supporting this. So thank you, Kevin.
Linda, you've done a phenomenal job since you've come here many years ago now.
We have 30 patients in 2004. We serve over 1,000, and it's not me, it's the team. We have amazing clinicians, doctors, social workers, chaplains, and they just love what they do every day. So my job is to support them and help them grow and do a good job. So thank you.
A great leader for the organization. I know, and I know Roy Mazur and his team are working hard to get you through that permitting process. I know you're almost there, so.
Oh, my gosh.
You're almost there, just hanging there. You're almost there.
Thank you. It's been a long 12 months.
Do you have any other members with you?
Yes, I have Juliana, who's our public relations.
Bring them up, and I'll, we'll join you down there for a picture in front of the dais.
Let's go. Let's go. The next resolution? The next resolution, Mr. Joe Richards?
Mr. Richards, I will go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-025, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Joseph D. Richards on 22 years of service to Pasco County. Whereas Joe Richards began his career with the county attorney's office as the primary utilities attorney for Pasco County in March of 2020, sorry, March of 2001. And whereas during the past 22 years, Joe has been the primary attorney handling all utilities, waters, and solid waste matters. His contributions had a direct and profound impact upon the face of Pasco County with significant improvements such as the development of new central water and wastewater facilities, construction of reclaimed water reservoirs, and recycling facilities, all while the utilities' customer base more than doubled in size. And whereas Joe worked to preserve the water resources and natural areas of Pasco County by working closely with several agencies such as Tampa Bay Water, Southwest Florida Water Management District, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Agency on projects that would secure the county's water resources for future generations. And whereas Joe worked on many ordinances to keep our water and waterways safe and clean, including but not limited to the Anclot River Speed Ordinance and Emergency Water Ordinance during a drought, the Seagrass Protection Ordinance, overnight mooring of vessels, and derelict docked ordinance, the Well Field Protection Ordinance, and most recently Pet Waste Management Ordinance, only to name a few. And whereas Joe was the lead attorney over all contracts related to the ongoing expansion of the county's solid waste facilities, including working with the University of Florida to create an ash reuse project, and negotiating the county, negotiating with the county's current Resource Recovery Facility Operator Covanta Pasco Incorporated. To design, build, and operate an extended incinerator and whereas ensuring compliance with regulatory requirements, Joe overlooked, I'm sorry, Joe overlooked all contracts related to the implementation of the county's award-winning reclaimed water system expansion, one of the largest beneficial wastewater reuse programs in the country. And whereas while handling all of this work, Joe also managed to handle any other legal matters thrown his way, not related to utilities, whenever the county attorney's office needed his assistance. We will miss his knowledge, work ethic, and genuine concern for the well-being of Pasco County staff, businesses, and residents. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby congratulates Joe Richards on 22 years of service to Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 14th day of November 2023.
Move approve.
Second.
Roll call vote?
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Oakley?
Yep. Joe, 22 years is not a long time, really, so. I was in my business 51 years, and I've been here seven. I think you need to put some more time in. And I think Mr. Steinsteiner needs your help, so. We got some, probably some side work for you, so. But you've done a great job, and we talked this morning on some issues, but really appreciate everything you've done. I know for a little over six and a half years since I was on Tampa Bay Water that you've been sitting in the audience many times, and just recently, I think Ms. Wolf replaced you there, but I miss seeing you there. I could always pick you out in the crowd, so. Knowing that you're supporting and looking at what we're doing for Tampa Bay Water and protecting that resource of water for all of our region, Pinellas County, Pasco County, and Hillsborough County, so certainly appreciate your eyesight over that review that we did, we did just that, and we're preparing water for the future, so. And it's, and I think we've all done a good job, and you've done a good job being there all that time. So, all the 22 years, I'm sure you've done a great job here for the county, and certainly appreciate all that you do, so.
Commissioner Waitman? Commissioner Waitman?
Well, we lost, didn't we lose another garbage man last meeting, and now we're losing another pseudo-one this meeting? All serious, I enjoyed working with you, and on solid waste issues in my year at Tampa Bay Water, congratulations, and, you know, we'll see, we'll see who's next, so, wish you well.
Okay. Ms. Starkey?
Well, Joe, I so enjoyed working with you when I was on Tampa Bay Water. I think you're as a calmest attorney I know. Always, I mean, really, it was just so wonderful to work with you, and I appreciate all the explaining that you did to me when I, did for me when I would call and ask questions, and, and your support. I'm really sorry to see you leave. I, I think you have very good, big shoes to fill, and I just wish you all the best in that one. I don't think it's in Florida, right? You're up in North Carolina somewhere or somewhere. That's what I thought.
You're from South Carolina.
South Carolina, yes.
Commissioner Bradford?
Joe, you're leaving, I'm coming, I'm welcoming around the tent bus, but I wish you well.
Carver, anybody who makes, who runs the game and able to go to South Carolina deserves it, so congratulations again, and I am looking forward to getting back to work, guys.
What'd be looking forward to, haven't you?
Yeah.
Joe, you've done a phenomenal job. Commissioner Starkey, it's funny you mention how calm he is, but he's literally, folks, this is the way he is. I don't care how intense it is. You know, there's one thing I didn't quite see in there, but I know the people at Summertree really appreciated your help when we had those Water Force Task Force we formed to try to like, how do we work against that private utility? And the work you did for them, I tell you, they greatly, greatly appreciate it. I know all the boaters in Pasco, when we had troubles with people building docks in the middle of canals where people couldn't get the boats out, we had to craft something that, you really did some great work. And your expertise has been phenomenal, your institutional knowledge will definitely be missed. And I, I don't have any replace him, Jeff, but you get some big shoes to get going there. I mean, utilities, his work was so good, utilities grabbed him to get over there to help out, so. What you did was phenomenal, so. We greatly appreciate you, and we wish you all the best in your career, Commissioner Oakley. Give him a little time to have some fun. Do you want to add anything, Joe?
Sure. Thank you very much for this honor, and thank Jeff for his support and guidance over the years. Couldn't have done it without the great team at the county attorney's office, including my secretary Linda Rios, who kept me organized and focused. But I have to, I have to thank my wife also. My wife Stephanie, she sacrificed and supported me in this move. We left, left our home in Miami to take this job, and now it's my turn to return the favor to her. She really wanted to move to South Carolina and live on the marsh, and so. I really love working for Pasco, but I love her a little bit more, so.
That's a good thing. That's a good thing.
I think if she's listening today, that went a long way.
Very good.
So, if y'all would like to join me down front?
Let's go.
I think both of us would like to. So, it's, I was going to go the opposite way that Commissioner Oakley went. I mean, it's unusual in this day and age for somebody to stay with a particular client for 22 years. That, that shows a lot about your integrity and, and your loyalty to, to the commission, to Pasco County. I had, you know, I had similar legal background when I was an assistant county attorney. It's not easy to practice water law, it, you know, especially here in Pasco County after the water wars, and so that's a, you know, it's a difficult area of law to practice, and you should be commended for, you know, what you've done for the utility system and, and for Pasco County in general. I also don't know a whole lot of lawyers that do repair and rights work, and you've filled that gap for the, for the county when dock permits were issued, maybe in error, and had to, you know, had to deal with those, those sorts of things. The administrator and I were talking about, over on the side, about how he nearly got you fired on a couple of occasions by asking you to do work off books and not through the protocols of the office, but we all, we moved past that. And I know, I know Mike wants to, wants to sing your praises as well, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Jeff, and Joe, thank you too. You know, you've, you've been here since I've started working here at Pasco County, and if I'd been able to get my hands on that resolution, it would have read all that stuff and probably a little bit more. But I'll publicly apologize for getting you in trouble for pushing, pushing the limits, but thank you. You've always been kind of a Tom Hagen, if you will, to me as we, as we, we talk through things. I'll miss our Wednesday lunch meetings, and I'll finally remember just our time in the trenches, working through contracts or deals with Tampa Bay Water, just a number of just utility issues, and just personally and professionally, my friend, I wish you the best.
Now that I've got to add something, because Tampa Bay Water just celebrated 25 years, and you've been here 22, so you had a lot to do with the water resource for our citizens here in Pasco, plus the region of Hillsborough County and Pinellas County, city of Tampa, and city of Newport Ritchie, and St. Petersburg. So, you had a lot to do over the 22 years with helping us get through those issues, and it's been a success story. So, it's worked, it's been one of the best things in the world for this regional water. A wholesaler as Tampa Bay Water has been great for Pasco County, and I'm, I'm sure we all, there's nine people that sit on that board, and we all support the resource of water for all of our citizens, so. It's, it's been, been great, and it's been a pleasure having you be a part of that, so thank you. Now, would y'all like to join me down front?
And I'd like to move to the next resolution, RS3.
Can Patrick Dudkowitz please come to the podium?
And Patrick, if you want to bring up the, your friends as well?
You got room? Bring them up. Got more than two friends, right?
Two special ones right there.
And your last name is pronounced Dudkowitz?
Yeah, Dudkowitz.
Dudkowitz?
Yeah, same.
All right, hold on. It's written seven times, so thank you very much for wrote this. All right. It's resolution number 24-023, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending firefighter/paramedic Patrick Dudkowitz. Right? Okay. For his heroic actions and dedication to the community. Whereas Pasco County firefighter/paramedic Patrick Dudkowitz has demonstrated exceptional dedication to his profession and the community. And whereas on May 25th, 2023, and again on June 1st, 2023, while off duty and working at a local CrossFit gym, firefighter/paramedic medic Patrick Dudkowitz sprang into action to provide lifesaving care to two individuals experiencing cardiac arrest. And whereas Patrick Dudkowitz performed cardiopulmonary resuscitation CPR and applied an automated external defibrillator AED, successfully obtaining return of spontaneous circulation, ROSC, prior to the arrival of Plant City Fire Rescue in both instances. And whereas these actions not only saved the lives of two community members, but also served as a testament to the dedication, professionalism, and readiness of firefighter/paramedic Patrick Dudkowitz and his fellow first responders in Pasco County. And whereas at a recognition ceremony, Patrick Dudkowitz was awarded a coin of character, which is given to people who do remarkable things out there in the field. And whereas firefighter/paramedic Patrick Dudkowitz, actions highlight the importance of hands-only CPR, a simple yet effective technique that can be the difference between life and death in the event of cardiac arrest. And whereas firefighter/paramedic Patrick Dudkowitz's actions serve as a powerful reminder of the critical role that first responders play in our communities and the lives that they save every day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes firefighter/paramedic Patrick Dudkowitz for his heroic actions and encourages all residents of Pasco County to learn hands-only CPR. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 14th day of November 2023.
Move approve.
Second.
Roll call vote?
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Carver.
District 5. District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. And before I get to commissioner comments, I just want to say, when I read the story, I was like really moved by it. I says, you know, we need to recognize this, bring it forward, and I'd love you to tell a little bit, a little bit more detail. I know people you saved came here today, they think that much of it, and you've got a great support team around you, and, I mean, it's, it's got to be some type of great feeling when you can save lives. And just going through it with people that are right with you right now, would you kind of elaborate on the story a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, it was definitely something you're not really prepared for, but you're not prepared at the same time. It's kind of just one of those things where it happens, and just natural reaction, but just from training, but I'm just thankful that, to see them here, Patty's here today, and Richard, he's not here right now, but just to see that they can be home with their families for the holidays or something here too, really means a lot more than anything.
Well, you're definitely a hero, and we thank you very much for being, working for us as a first responder, but then taking that extra step outside to save, save a couple of lives is phenomenal, so thank you very much. Gentlemen, Commissioner Oakley?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for all that you've done for our citizens, and especially this is, it's a great thing, and you said- It's a great thing, and you said you're never prepared, but basically, you're trained to be prepared, and you were prepared. So it's a great thing that what you've done, and certainly appreciate everything you do. And it carries a long way to many, many families, that they know people like you are part of our organization, and that you're out there prepared and trained to help take care of them. So that's very important. Thank you.
Mr. Waitman?
Thank you. I'd be honored to be your workout partner anytime. If I ever start working out again. But no, hey, look, you're trained, it's instinctive, it's apparent, and you're always on. And so we appreciate the sense of urgency that all of you have. You have a great support team behind you. And so great work. And because of you, families will be having a very, hopefully, great Thanksgiving and a very Merry Christmas, and a great start to the new year. So good job.
Mr. Starkey?
And just like my fellow commissioners, I want to thank you so much. You represent us very well, and I'm very grateful that you were able to step in and do the acts that you did. I actually heard about it on the news somewhere. I don't know if it was TV or newspaper, so I'm really honored to meet you in person and thank you.
Very good. Yes, Madam Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to also address you, and I think that the work that you do every day is absolutely heroic. I know it's what your job is, but for you and your fellow men and women firefighters, thank you so much for what you do. And to your family, you know, because they kiss you goodbye when you leave. And I know that it is a struggle. But I just wanted to say, that was five days apart, correct? Or six? One week apart. Two people. You were in the right place at the right time. God put you in the right place in the right time. You've made such an amazing impact on their lives, and I know that they're forever grateful for you. So thank you for doing what you do.
Amazing. All right, let's get a picture. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bradford, sorry about that. I wish you were here more.
My fault, I'm so sorry.
The clerk jumped your position.
I did, I'm so sorry, Commissioner.
Congratulations. I'm so very proud of you. I'm proud of the work you do. I'm proud of the family that you have there supporting you, which is, it's tough when you leave for the day and they're there. It's tough. I've been in those shoes a long time ago, but I've been in those shoes. And I'm extremely proud of this board, that each individual commissioner supports our firefighters, not only in word, but in funding and the benefit packages. And really appreciate everything you've done for this community. Thank you.
Now for picture.
Need all the ones in support come up.
Come on, guys.
Come on, team. The whole team.
What? Everybody. Oh, oh, Jack, Jack.
What is it?
Jack, the person that he saved is here. Yeah, bring that person up. Oh, he's not here.
It's her. It's his.
Oh, okay. Well, this guy said there was someone else.
I bet you like having him on there. Yes. The one in the black sweater. Okay, we should have had her say something. We should have let her say something. Well, maybe.
Everybody jumping in on this. Trey and I went to Dallas. Because he had a, he had a long week. So. Rode my bikes on two of their.
You need to go front. These are very tall bikes.
Either you go there, or you stay. One of the people that he saved is here, and the gym owner. So do you have a chance to talk with him?
Just want to make sure you're over.
Yep, I think they're up. I was going to move back, we're going to move right up. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But I see Judge Pavllo is here. Maybe he'll stay.
We're going to move to R 33. We have a graduation for our Citizens Academy. Mr. Carbella?
83.
I'm sorry, R 83.
Yes.
R 83, sorry. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Derek Berger, County Administration. Today, we celebrate the Fall 2023 Graduating Class of Pasco Citizens Academy. Pasco Citizens Academy is an 11-week educational program designed to give citizens a backstage pass to their county government by providing an in-depth look at the unique challenges facing county government, programs and services, budgetary limitations, and the day-to-day operations from elected officials to county team members. I will present the certificates of completions to those able to join us today. Following the presentation, we ask that you join us for a class photo. Class, when I call your name, please come up for your certificate and stay standing behind me. Barbara Martin.
If I could, I think we should all go down there and shake everybody's hand as they come through, and congratulate them.
Yeah.
All right, listen to that. Nice and quick.
So Barbara Martin. Brian Paris. Gregory Messer. Jennifer Kerewak. Karen Romani. Monica Ramirez. Stefania Dewey. J.P. Murphy. Ashley Cooper. Joseph Abru. Anthony Russo. Antonia Prigantis. Karen Fisher. Kaitlin McMahon. Lindsey Abbott. And David Allen. So congratulations. So congratulations to the Fall 2023 class. We hope you enjoyed our program. Thank you for your interest in learning about what we do every day to make a difference in the lives that matter. We're currently accepting applications for the Fall 2024 class. More information can be found on the website at mypasco.net. Thank you.
Oh, and one of the students like to speak?
Yeah, we'd like to hear how you liked it, so anyone wants the mic?
Yeah, I actually recommend everybody, citizen-wise, you should take the class. It's really cool. You get to learn about every aspect of the government in our county, and you get to ask people questions, tough questions, and they answer them. So, you know, take full advantage of learning about our county. It's really awesome.
Thank you, Derek.
Anyone else? Okay.
Hi, I'm Stefania Dewey, County Administration. I work for the county, and I want to say that I've had the best time with Citizens Academy. I've learned so much about all of our departments. Everybody took time out of their schedules to give great presentations, really fun experience for everybody. We all started off as strangers, and now we're all buddies. And it's really nice from the perspective of an employee. So I encourage any employee that hasn't had a chance to go through the program to attend. It's great. I promise your supervisor will be flexible, and you get to leave an hour early every Wednesday.
Hi, I'm Karen. I just moved to Florida, and Pasco County specifically, a year and a half ago. And I'm really involved in my community, working on a board and an HOA. And I have just been fascinated at how many absolute amazing resources that the county has to offer. I'd always wanted to do this. There's one in Indiana similar to this, but it was always during a workday. Now I'm a little more flexible. And the amount of resources that the county has, and how hard they work, and getting to know how all you do, your jobs, has just been amazing and eye-opening when I'm watching the local news and talking with people in my community. I can speak to things like now I know about the Live Local Act and how it's impacting Pasco. So I can bring a balanced part of a conversation to people who are just going, ah, county this, ah. So it's been really informative. When you know more, you can make better informed decisions, and that's what I have gotten out of this the most.
Very good. Thank you.
Hey, y'all know me, Pastor Jen here. So it has been an excellent experience. I agree, as someone who was trying to maneuver their way through advocating for their community.
It's the photo.
You know, having the understanding of the way things work, the flow of Pasco County, getting a better understanding will significantly help anyone who is wanting to get their three minutes. Thank you.
And I want to say, I had taken leadership to Pasco back in 2003, best it'll ever be. But Commissioner Starkey, this was a great idea, bringing this forward. And it's been a great success to let our citizens actually see what goes behind the scenes and get the details to it. So we hope you'll share that information with everybody you know. And if you have any questions, obviously, you've got five very engaged commissioners who would love to entertain and try to help you with whatever you see out there, to help us become better commissioners too. Thank you all, appreciate it. Commissioner Oakley? Hey, folks, before you go?
I know for one thing, y'all have had to find out how long it takes after we vote on something to happen. How long it takes to get it to happen? Just like a road. If you'll watch roads, when they say we're going to vote, and we vote, this road's going to be paved, five years later, you see it finished, five years later. Those things need to move quicker, and we would love to have them move quicker, but there's a lot to do with the road. If you watch a road, you'll first see on a new road, rebuild of a road, you'll see when they're widening from two lanes to four lanes, you'll see that they're moving telephone lines, they're moving electric lines. And you see all this happening, it's opening up, and then you see new light poles and all going to the outside. It takes a long time to coordinate and do that, and all the staff is a part of doing that. So I appreciate y'all going through that, and hopefully y'all were able to see those things. Rome wasn't built in a day, but, you know, we'd like to build it quicker if we could. So thank you. But thank y'all for your service.
And Joanna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to publicly thank Derek. He's done a great job leading the class through. He's a great guide into that, and thank you for the team for being flexible. We try to tweak the program each time we do it to make it, the experience a little better. So thank you for the team for being flexible. We purposefully moved the budget game as the last session, because we wanted the cohort to, you know, see all the cool things that the county does and the services we provide, and then have to make those tough decisions at the very end, like you all do. And hearing that conversation and how they come to the conclusion is quite interesting. So thank you, class. Please spread the word. You guys are our new ambassadors. We want you to keep in touch with us. Let, you know, your friends and family know, if you work or live in Pasco County, you can take this program for free. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for taking time out of your personal lives. There really is no place that you learn about local government. So that's why we think this is so important for our citizens to come and go through the class, because they just don't teach that in school. And so I'm just very grateful, we all are, that you took the time.
Mr. Starkey, you may have just opened something up. Maybe we need to actually look at that for our school system.
Well, they're going to tell you they don't have enough time to do what they're doing.
But we can make it a volunteer thing for after-school, so that might be a good thing. We may look into that.
Never give up.
Good idea. Okay. Well, thank you all very much. We greatly appreciate you. All right, I'd like to go to the consent agenda. I have several items for pull. I do have the time set at 11:15, but I'm going to move you back, Bill, just a little bit. We're going to do this quick. All right? So the consent agenda. Item C 14 for a pull and revise, C 22 with withdrawn, C 28 pull and revise, C 49, 81 were withdrawn. I have pulled C 19, C 13, and C 46. And I would like to just do the pull and revises first. Andy Fossa, C 14.
C 13 and 46, Chair.
13 and 46, yes.
Sorry, Andy's not here today. Me, Eric Breitenbach, Assistant County Administrator for Internal Services. C 14 is for maintenance of software that services the 911 Center. The recommended board action did not contain authorization for the Chair to sign the quote, so my revision requested is to add that authorization for the Chair to sign the quote.
Do to approve, C 14.
Recommended.
Second. Roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman. District 3, Commissioner Starkey. District 4, Commissioner Bradford. District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye, motion passes, C 28.
I guess I was. I'm not sure.
Good morning, Board members. Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. This is a change to the sale and purchase agreement for Kirkland Ranch Kiefer Road widening. The agenda item has been revised to reflect the following sections. The fiscal impact section has been revised to identify the required funding in the amount of $3,000, and to also identify the funding source and project number. The distribution section has been revised... The distribution section has been revised to include instructions to board records to retain the executed agreement signed by the Chairman and distribution of the fully executed original agreement.
Move to approve, C-28.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford. District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. And item C-19, I just pulled this open for a reason. I just want to recognize what we're doing. I don't know if the Chief or JJ wants to speak to this briefly, what we're doing. It's a environmental fire station for gear cleaning facility. It's all about protecting our firefighters. Chief, you want to talk about it for a second? And again, fully supportive, I just want to draw our attention that we're doing the best we can to help.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tony Perez, Fire Chief, Pasco County Fire Rescue. So what we're doing here, we're teaming up with facilities. We're doing what's called a decon depot at Fire Station 28. It's a decontamination process for the health and safety of our firefighters. As we know today, cancer is extremely relevant in our fire service, and we're exposed to all those contaminants. So what we're looking to do is improve our process. And right now, we currently have a Fire Station Number Nine, and Fire Station 38 are decon processing systems that are in place today. What we're looking to expand that, that we can have a much quicker turnaround time for our members to get their gear back. Currently, right now, we have two 45-pound machines that can roughly do four sets of gear at a time. For just plain sake, on a normal working structure fire, we can have up to 20 to 28 members on scene at one time. So four sets of gear, the process takes much longer, the turnaround time is longer, it's greater than 72 hours. So what we're looking to do is with this decon depot is to have two 65-pound washers, one 45-pound washer, that's going to allow us to wash 16 sets of gear at one time. So we reduce that reflex time of 72 hours, and we get that gear back to our members at a much quicker rate, and it saves us money having to send that out and get it laundered. So it's a win-win for us in the county and the Fire Department.
Move to approve, C-19.
Second. Roll call vote. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford. District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. And C-13, I pulled this, and I was looking for a red-line version. I didn't quite get it. But I want to say, as far as like fees, before I increase fees, my thought was, even though they may be separate, our permitting fees have been collecting, and we've got a surplus, and we're looking at bringing those fees down. Before, actually, it would increase fees, even though it's a separate type of thing, I think we should look at trying to like bring this back with that at the same time to say, we are increasing fees for these, but we're going to be cutting fees on the others. I don't know what the Board thought there, but that's my inkling, because I would have thought we would have had the fees that we're going to cut back sooner than that. Commissioner Waitman?
No surprise. I'd be happy to take a look at a fee schedule and understand it a little more thoroughly, Chair.
Okay. So should we continue this maybe 30 days?
Sure.
60 days, and maybe we can break back at the same time, looking, we might be able to cut on our permitting fees for the rest?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. As you point out, these fees are different than the building construction fees. I have talked with Mr. Major. There is an ongoing effort right now to look at the permitting fees and doing them differently. Mr. Major has seen some things, and he wants to make some changes to that, so I applaud his diving into that. These, this fee schedule is just an update for planning and development fee schedules, which is subsidized through the general fund. So there are areas where we are subsidizing the development community, also trying to do some things on traffic, as well as live local costs that we would assess on that. That's what this fee schedule is about. I don't have a problem delaying it 30 days if the Board would like to understand it in a little more detail and be prepared to bring that back to you.
And I know Mr. Major is doing a great job. I'm delighted he's there. I think he's going to do a phenomenal for us, but again, I do want to take a look at both at the same time to kind of give an offset.
Mike, do you want to bring it back in December, or do you want to bring it back in January? Because 30 days will put you in January, just.
Correct. So I think I would have to ask Mr. Major what the timing is on the BCS permitting side of the house is, if the Board wants them to be together. I don't know about one-for-one, but Roy?
And if new portage is easier, we can do that, too.
Roy Major, Assistant County Administrator, Development Services. The item in front of you is largely driven by the expenses that we would incur to monitor live local initiatives and make sure they're in compliance. There also are some activities, some permitting activities that we do very routinely that we are not compensated for, but we do frequently. We do have a presentation if you're interested in seeing that. I would just also point out that our planning group actually draws revenue out of the general fund to the tune of about $2 million a year at this point. And so we thought that it would be a good idea to recoup some of the revenue that we are not currently billing for. With that said, with BCS, there's been initiative going on to look at our BCS fees for about two years now, and so clearly that's had some fits and starts. And so it's a high priority, just take a look at what's been done and just really see where we are in that effort.
Let me reconsider my position.
Yeah.
And I'll say why. You know, the live local is a big deal, and that was one of the things I really liked about it. So that is in there, that is something we do need to get into place. And I'm glad you mentioned, it's been about two years we've talked about this, but I know you've just about, I think the chillers are on, the new building are going in, we know what the costs are going to be, we know we're ready to go. So if you could maybe just give me a verbal commitment that within 60 days, you'll get something back to us about doing the regular cuts, then I'm good to let this thing go.
I'm very willing to talk about that.
To try. Just try.
And just discuss where we are in that effort. I guess to manage expectations, for us to come before you in 60 days with a recommendation to lower building fees or raise building fees, I can't make that commitment, but to discuss it.
Just give it an effort, that's all I want to hear, and I'll be supportive of this.
Yes, sir. I will commit to that.
Okay. And I know you've got so much going on, and you're doing a phenomenal job, so thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford. District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Okay. Last one was C-46. I pulled that just for one reason. I think interest rates we just saw may be ticking down. Our interest rates last year were at 7%. We have raised them up continually for the past several years. I think at 7%. I don't think we need to go any higher than that at this point, especially if the market may change. So if the Board is comfortable keeping it the same rate we've got, I think I've talked to the Administrator, he's comfortable with that, too. Just keep it the same rate we got.
Yeah.
Move approval.
So we need to move approval to?
Move approval to the 7% rate?
Yeah.
That's good.
I move approval.
Will that work?
Okay.
Is it? Okay, yeah. Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford. District 5, thank you. District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Okay. And now we'll move to?
Mr. Chair, we need a motion for the rest of the consent.
I move to approve all other items not brought up in the poll.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes, thank you. Mr. Cronin, please come forward.
Good morning, everyone. Happy Tuesday, and I'm glad you got the consent items approved. That would have been a major issue. It's my pleasure today to present to you our fourth quarter report for the Pasco EDC with regards to our contract for a memorandum of understanding, as well as our agreement for the penny for Pasco. Do I have? Thank you. Clicker. First of all, before I proceed, I'll go fairly quickly and give you some summary slides as well, too. But I did want to mention, I think it'd be great if we scholarship the media into our Citizens Academy so that they could start telling that story. And I don't know how many of them live here in Pasco, but I wish they were sitting here today to hear everything that was talked about today. This was a great meeting. So more good news, we didn't save any lives or anything like that, but we created some jobs and helped to create jobs. So first, I'll talk about the MOU, and I believe this is the good news report. We had 13 wins over this last year, which coincidentally was our goal. We still have about six that are coming to you very soon in the hopper, projects that are in those late stages, actually seven, you see down at the bottom there. But last year, we had 13 wins, $188 million of capital investment, just a little shy of $200 million, and 3,400 jobs in the area. A mix of the types of companies that are coming here. I think this is probably some of the best news, is the wins are those that are in the black, and you've got high-tech, advanced manufacturing, stuff that we historically really didn't get a chance to be participants in, and now we're winning these projects. But as you can see, the pipeline is full, and for those of you who have ever been in sales before, you see our leads are 90 and our projects are 125. Our funnel is a little inverted right now because we've got a lot of really good activity that's transformed into projects and not just leads. Historically, we average about 30 projects at a time, not 125. So that'll tell you how busy we are, not just by looking out in the community. Business retention, again, this is where we spend a lot of our time. It's not just moving people here, but it's taking care of them after they're here and helping them to grow. And part of that is getting out there and actually visiting them, understanding their business. Year-to-date, we ended up with 85 unique visits, several of them were multiple visits, going back and helping out companies, and quite a few workforce connections, 133 connections, and that's referring people to AM Skills, to Career Source. That's also really indicative of our future as well, too. We're going to be doubling down on workforce development, as well as entrepreneurship going forward. Events and conferences, again, this is just the fourth quarter. Over the year, we hit our goals and we got the word out. Those that are in bold are those that we actually hosted ourselves, and a lot of them, you all participated in as well. We are your marketing agency for business and economic development, and I'm proud to say we had $1.5 million of earned media value. Now, I still haven't figured out how to bring that to the bank and cash it, but that is something that, it shows the multiplication of our media that picks up on our stories and tells our stories. And sometimes that's better than me telling our stories, because I'm the hired help. Website views, fourth quarter, 25,000. That's quite a bit, actually, considering we didn't have a lot of big events that quarter, so you ended up with a lot of people that were looking. And if you look at where those hits are coming from, no surprise, California, New York, we don't want all of them, we want some of them, of course, to come and locate here, Georgia, Virginia, and Washington. Market, social media highlights, and again, 425,000 impressions, 56,000 engagements, that's where people are actually conversing back and forth. A lot of that is our startups and our smaller companies here. As far as our public-private partnership, where we're at right now, we've got 82 total investors, private sector investors, and a new one this term, right here from Dade City, Tiger Concrete and Screed. We raised $682,000 from the private sector, and our Board and Policy Council members, we've got 40 total. So a lot of participation from the private sector here. Some events that we had, again, the annual awards, very happy and proud of our leadership award this year was to Mr. Ray Gant, who's done so much, not just for education, but for economic development and for all of our community, especially the penny for Pasco. Upcoming events, and I'll see you all in a couple of weeks, for our investor party at 4G. Also, at that time, you'll be getting a copy, a new copy of the annual report, which will be published by that time, and we'll have lots of glossies and more stats that back up some of these items. Pasco 50 is going to be December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, and again, this is that Workforce Connect program where we're bringing in the HR and leaders from the top 50 companies from each side of the county to understand what their needs are. If you don't have any questions on the MOU, I'll quickly go for the penny for Pasco. Okay? All right. Lots of awards this year. We had nine awards from our peer and industry organizations. Many of them were national and international in scope. This is from the International Economic Development Council, that is our accreditation agency. We actually got four awards. These are mockups, and they only had three available for us. We were the only group that had four awards, so just pretend one of those is two awards at that event. But there's nothing better than having your peers say, you're doing a great job as well. Ready sites, it's interesting, the first item on the ready sites, and these are summaries of those big penny items, Zephyr Hills and Airport Industrial Park, final round of site selection for a manufacturing company to locate on this site. Remember, this is fourth quarter, so this was prior to October 1. You guys met the company not long afterwards, which was Baduco that came to you.
Hang on one moment. Mr. Waitman?
Just a comment. We talked briefly on this, but for our ready sites, are those protected from live local?
Yes. Yeah. The ready sites, all of our ready sites are under an agreement with us as well, too. Most of them are about five-year agreements. So if we don't get them marketed and somebody in those sites by that time, they can come back and ask for rezoning, but most of them probably, hopefully, will be used by that time, and we'll get somebody in there. That is something that the ready sites, so Ready Sites was established 2015, 2016, and a lot of it had to do with some of these same issues that we're working with, with live local, and that is preserving land for industry, because industry doesn't necessarily move as fast as residential, and making sure that we've got that job creation there. Ready sites took us almost five years to change the culture of land ownership in Pasco. Keeping in mind, a lot of the landowners here were ranchers that had residential developers beaten at their door, we had to go convince them not only to set aside the land, to invest in it, to go market it, and potentially sell it for less, industrial versus residential. So as you can imagine, that's a really tough sell for us to convince those landowners to do, but after five years, we now have about 2,000 acres of sites, and they're working. So it's all very related and very similar. The key was to preserve that land for industrial growth, but not forever. Preserve it till we get the jobs there. Great question. International program, we continue to grow and work with our neighbors to the south, Pinellas and Hillsborough. We had a trade mission to Santa Domingo this year. We had three of our Pasco companies participate in it, which we're starting to see more and more of that, is people looking for outside markets. And we joined the Southeast US delegation to Japan along with Moffitt, and we attended the bio show in Japan to try to attract more life sciences companies to the new Spiro's campus. Enhanced marketing, talked about the awards we've won. Workforce Connect, Workforce Connect has historically been its own program department, and that, again, that's working in the interest of the employers, not necessarily the employees. There's a lot of different agencies that are working in the interest of the employees. So this is for employers, when they're looking to hire people to help them shepherd through that system. That now has grown into a tool called Connect App, and you'll see that in the annual report, and we'll be doing another launch on that so that you can actually try out the app as well. Executive Success Program, we kicked off another cohort in September, and Smart Start. So Smart Start, our third location at West Pasco, was open this quarter, or last quarter, and we're co-located with AM Skills. And so far, it has been an amazing partnership because they're thinking along the same lines as we are, and we're talking about skills that people can take and actually make a living out of.
Can I make a comment on that one?
Mr. Starkey?
So one of your members over there is a guy that makes signs, and he mentioned that, you know, right now he doesn't have a CNC machine, doesn't know how to use it, but he wants to grow into, grow his business to where he is cutting materials on CNC. And so I said to him, why don't you just come use our machines? You know, we can work out, you don't have to invest in your own until you're ready for that, but you can work out something with AM Skills where you learn how to do it and do it on our machines.
That's right.
So that's how that partnership can work between P EDC customers and us.
Yeah. And I think really similar to like even the Dade City incubator, where we've got a commercial kitchen. So you've got people that can got a commercial kitchen. So you've got people that can actually do hands-on, working with equipment that was either donated or brought from the county, to be able to grow their business. And you know how expensive those machines are. Can you imagine as a startup, going out, purchasing a machine, and then find out, oh, that's not my cup of tea?
Yeah.
That's a lot of money to put out there. So these are really helping the people in each one of those neighborhoods and each one of those regions. I'm gonna go ahead and skip to the end, which is kind of the report card for the end of the year, because I believe all of these are in your packets, but each of the programs has a dashboard to it. And if I can get to the end. Oops. Okay.
Too far.
Okay, I guess I'm done. Okay. There we go. Thank you. Somebody's helping me a little bit. So when you look at the overall dashboard, you see we're trending ninety-four percent. I like to say that's an A. There's always room for improvement. And again, this is specifically the penny programs. Between the two programs, between the MOU, working with general funds and working with the penny, at the end of this year, we found that the return on investment for the public dollar is two hundred and twenty-one to one. So every dollar that we're getting from the public, we're creating two hundred and twenty-one dollars in output to our local gross county product. So I will stop there and see if you have any questions. And I know you've got a couple of things you want to try to do before lunch today.
Okay. Any questions? I'm gonna throw one question at you.
Yeah.
Talking about the ready sites that we've got, Zephyr Hills Airport, how critical it is, rail lines there, airports there. A subject coming up today, it's due for the next one, but we're gonna do one in between, on the greater Lakouchi area. We've talked about the railhead, the rail spur. How important is that to try to capitalize on for the county?
Oh, huge, huge. Not only that, not just for Lakouchi and that region, to create jobs in that area. Historically, CSX spur, that spur coming down out of Jacksonville has not been the most efficient and the fastest. And I think the more activity down here, the more it will warrant more attention from CSX and that we can start actually marketing the other rail-serve sites that we have around there, too. We have, you remember, we have one of our large ready sites, over a thousand acres, the enterprise site that is served by CSX, not far from there. So each one of these incremental wins that we make by getting more rail traffic, one, we get trucks off the road, two, we're getting jobs, and three, we're making really good use of that rail alignment that we can utilize for business there. So it is important. And CSX railroads don't move very easily or very quickly, we know. And I really appreciate the perseverance to continue to work on them, not just for that, but also for things like trails and other track space that they have that they might not be utilizing, too.
Okay. I'm gonna throw one other idea to you, too. It's gonna be conversation later on today. We're gonna be looking at some developments in the connected cities, also the VOPH. And what we're finding is sometimes we get some stuff we want to have come in, but there's not enough infrastructure in place to make it all happen. And we're gonna need some creative ways to talk about it as a commission coming up. And I think one of the things, the great job you've done with the penny for Pasco has given us that flexibility with transportation, and that may be one of the venues we use to even improve our return a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. And again, that project, you know, I don't think anybody had the crystal ball back then to know how this county was gonna grow and at the rapid rate that we're working at, and then inflation on top of that. But yeah, there are still quite some entitlements out there we'd like to see utilized, especially the business piece of it to create some jobs out there, too. Those of you that drove from the other side of the county, you know the traffic is getting more congested out here. The more jobs we create locally, the much better it's gonna be that you get those people off the road.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much for a great presentation and the great work you're doing.
I have one more thing.
One more, okay.
To share. And you guys notice I've been riding bike on the trails, about twenty-two miles each time. And I see runners every once in a while at twenty-two miles, and I'm like, I don't know how they do it. But I don't know if you all realize that our own chief of staff ran the Tampa One Hundred, one hundred miles. I can't fathom it, but I have just a small token of just admiration for you.
Joanna?
Great job.
Wow.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bill. Keep up the great work. Your team, your board is phenomenal, so we appreciate you. I'd like to just move to item R-86, Amy Farrell. Amy, if you'd please come up.
Mr. Chair, if you'll let me, I'm gonna jump in front of Ms. Farrell.
No.
No.
Go ahead.
Eric Breitenbach, Assistant County Administrator for Internal Services. I'm here today to ask the board's support in confirming Ms. Amy Farrell is the next director of the office management and budget for the counties. As you all know, and I think Commissioner Starkey remarked earlier, Mr. Bob Gorig, the previous budget director, decided to retire earlier this year, although he graciously decided to stay along so that he, or stay on until we had somebody in place for the contact relief. After going through the interview process, myself and several members of the team interviewed many candidates, and it turns out we didn't have to look very far and that Bob's contact turnover won't necessarily need to be very long. As the best candidate, it turned out to be somebody that we had in-house, Amy Farrell. She's been in the budget office for nearly seven years and has a lot of experience from the ground up with budgeting. More importantly, she shares the county's core values, the county's vision. And I've personally observed over the last several years her solid leadership skills. And I'm confident she's the right person to lead the office going forward, and I strongly recommend the board confirm her today. So thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. So Amy?
Hi, good morning. I understand I'm between you all and lunch, so I'll be quick. I do, I'm very honored and humbled by this opportunity to continue to serve the county, but in this new, different capacity. I'm excited to work closely with you all to help put some dollars and resources to your strategic plan, your vision, your goals. And I'm just really excited.
Well, thank you. Well, to the board.
Move approval?
Second.
Yeah, roll call vote?
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waite.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Amy, congratulations. And Mr. Carbella, you've got a great team, and I really appreciate the way you're letting people from within the organization rise up. You've selected some great people across the board. This is like another great one coming up. Guys like Roy, we needed to come in from the outside was one thing, but he was in here before, too. So I kind of count him as an inside guy, too. But Amy, we're looking forward to working with you in the future. And Bob, you can go now. All right. So we've got ten minutes to the hour. We do have a litigation meeting we've gotta do. We can take and break for that, and then we'll hear the other R items after the noted items. Okay. All right. So we'll adjourn for lunch. And Mr. County Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I desire the advice of the Board of County Commissioners concerning the case of Inray Aquius Film Foaming Foam Products Liability Litigation, United States District Court, South Carolina Charleston Division, MDL number two eighteen MN twenty-eight seventy-three, to discuss settlement negotiations and strategy related to litigation expenditures. And for that reason, I request a private attorney-client meeting. If the board approves, you should open the private attorney-client meeting and announce the commencement and estimated length of the private attorney-client meeting and the names of the persons attending. At the conclusion of the private attorney-client meeting, the board's public meeting should be reconvened. That will be after you break for lunch, and you should announce the termination of the private attorney-client meeting. The entire private attorney-client meeting will be reported by a certified court reporter, and the transcript thereof will be made public upon conclusion of the litigation. I estimate the attorney-client meeting will last approximately forty-five minutes. We have scheduled a certified court reporter to be in attendance in the commissioner's conference room for the private attorney-client meeting.
Okay.
You will, yeah, we need to read that.
I hereby announce the commencement of a private attorney-client meeting, at which board will discuss settlement negotiations, strategy related to litigation expenditures, and RE Aquius Film Foaming Foams Product Liability Litigation, United States District Court of South Carolina Charleston Division, MDL number two colon eighteen MN dash two eight seven three. The names of the person expected to attend the private attorney-client meeting are Chairman Jack Mariano, Commissioners Ron Oakley, Seth Waite, Catherine Starkey, the county attorney Jeff Stein Schneider, the county administrator Mike Carbella, senior county assistant, county Joe D. Richards, senior county attorney Jordan Wolfgram, outside counsel body Jody J. Fortunato, a court reporter. The estimated length of the private attorney meeting is approximately forty-five minutes. The private attorney-client meeting will now convene in the commissioner's conference room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're on recess until?
We're on recess till one thirty.
Thank you.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at seven-two-seven-eight-three-four-three-six-one-one.